Okay, it's done. Josh is good.
Sarah?
Quick, thanks, Mary. Thank you, Council. Um, this is our first conversation, our first workshop to talk twenty twenty five within twenty twenty six buying your budget. Um, so I'm gonna leave the agenda up here, um, and let go through that. You know, the intent for this workshop is that by the time you get to the board, you know, council, accountability, like functions that we with the only budget, I'm gonna scroll back to the work on this session that we had. Um, some goes to other more recent organizational developments. Um, and so, you know, really just making sure that you're, um, still on the same page as far as assumptions that went into this budget. If there is doc signs, you could disclose as well, um, because the next step is going to be coming back um, in about a week's time with the party document. So you've got, um, you know, at least a third day rival again. Uh, the budget document before a second workshop and first week of work is off for twenty seven. So this is high level options so that we can go ahead and finish the, finish the recipe. Um, so I do just wanna quickly share what net results from the general fund through August. I'm sure something like this past budget workshops, just to get even up there where we're at compared to a year ago. What the main takeaway here is that we're trending from a net perspective, just like we are most years. You know, the general fund is, is one where you really only have about four or five months where your revenues exceed your expenses. And those are gonna be your bloody settlement months, January, February, and August. And then we do have a, a pretty heavy revenue month to get in November, some of that big slasher revenues coming. Otherwise, you know, really what we're doing is just monitoring expenses, um, for the rest of the years to make sure that we come in, you know, fully with, um, some amount of, of approval to our budgets, which then, you know, of course comes back into play when this is the planning cash finance priorities and capital expenses and things. So the, the main story is that we're trending in line with, um, the prior year. From the utility perspective as of August, um, the electric utility does have an operating, uh, uh, surplus, but when you factor in capital expenses, for think like remaining expenses for phase of the truly phased feeder project and some transformer, other different replacements. Uh, we do currently have a, a drawdown of about two hundred fifteen thousand dollars in the electric utility. Similarly with water, again, from an operating perspective, um, you know, revenues exceed expenses, but when you factor in those capital expenses, uh, there would be again as of August, a, a small cash drawdown there. Um, the story with the sewer utility is that we do still have bond proceeds we're spending out for the biosalt project. So you see kind of a big, um, net loss there of two point two six million dollars. But that's not actually coming from unassigned reserves of that fund. That's still us spending through our bond proceeds. Um, so the sewer utility is, is probably similarly positioned to electric and water. And we talked through, you know, all the service commission process for electric and water. But we did talk about the need for also looking at sewer on the horizon. Um, and that, that continues to be the case and something that continues to monitor, come back and talk with you about, uh, likely at the next workshop.
Josh, I'm sorry to interrupt. What are the fund balances for electric, water, sewer? Sort of for, from a, from a balance sheet side, how much cash should we sit on?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to go back, uh, with you on that. I can send that out as a part of.
Oh, that's fine.
Of course, I mean, there's two other things.
Yep.
As fun as it is, the annual response includes any cash.
Right. Assets, so I, I think you want cash.
I want cash.
Yep. And I do have some charts that will at least get into that things of cash on me, but I don't have.
That's fine.
Um, so just kind of a reminder, you see various versions of a chart that looks like this. So, you know, right now we're at this process and it's very much kind of a cyclical ongoing process from my perspective. We're obviously here today talking about annual budget, which includes, um, elements of the capital improvement plan as well from the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty two adopted plan. You know, how we arrived here is really from taking feedback from other planning documents, a comprehensive plan, taxing for the district plans, our strategic plan, utility business plans. And then a little bit of fiscal plan for the general fund that we talk about every other year. And those kind of follow into our two-year binding of budget process, our four-five-year CD capital improvement plan. And then from those, we then understand better what our adopted levy fees and charges that our customers who ultimately see are. And then this obviously also further into things like the administrative work plan. So we kind of, another way of looking at this is as you move from bottom to top, you're, you're kind of operationalizing everything as, as we go. Um, so I also, so now we're gonna get into assumptions. And, um, in another slide, I'm gonna start to give you the specifics a little bit. But I do just want to talk kind of high level as far as like the ledgers that we can close, we go through the fiscal plan and budgeting process. So, and there's more than just what's listed here, so as I says, annual at the bottom, but they're kind of big ones. So, you know, first and foremost, the tax levy is another that we, if we were, so there's that. For the library, debt service, cash financing, super capital funds. Um, the tax levies are never making, but now of course we exist within the framework of the state's letting move program. As, as we talk about, um, we talked that way with the fiscal plan. And we also exist within council plan, which one, even for net levy, what it by from one person, so we'll talk about that again too. And then of course, to a fund balance targets for the general fund, which is a minimum of forty percent, where the target is broken. And then anything above fifty, obviously we've worked to try to apply in the form of cash financing, super capital projects, so the model would be fifty plus percent fund balance each year. Um, wages and benefits are another level we can go. We certainly make it, as some of you guys will talk about on the slide, that we wanna remain competitive from a, from a wages and benefits perspective. But personnel is the largest office, so from an expense perspective, that, that certainly is a lever to put the means of it. They package and things like that. Internal service levels are another one, and another way of saying that is just overhead. So, um, we believe that we've talked with the council in the past about internal service levels over these next five years with the fiscal plan. Um, the assumption that we came away with is that we're trying to, uh, kind of minimize our overhead and seek to get personnel budgeting into direct service provision positions of the city. Um, and we must see that in this, in this budgeting process. Take support to the general fund. So our taxing for the districts and, and really economic development kind of get large. You know, not only is anticipated to kind of pay for it, sell it as far as the over parks and in those, uh, we also use our taxing for the districts to get money back into operations for the city. And that takes primarily two forms, one of which is just direct general, or CD tin support to the general funds. Um, you know, that we tie with costs in departments like community development. Um, another one is when we issue interfund rolls or advances to the TINs, we expect those to be paid back to the general fund plus interest. Um, and so that interest represents income to the general fund, not, not the principal in the advances, but that interest portion. Um, but, you know, when we look at the overall mixes of revenues, and this is kind of a fiscal plan discussion that we then try to operationalize as part of the budget. Um, you know, tin support and how much tin support reliance be placed, um, in the general fund budget is certainly a lever we can go up and down. Over the next five years, we were trying to kind of lean that down a little bit. Um, understanding that it's unlikely we'll ever get away from having tin support in the general fund in our budget at this point. Um, and so to that extent, we will continue to rely on growth as an institution that we will operate within. Um, so we have an investment priorities is another lever. Um, and again, similar to kids, tin support, this kind of takes two forms as well. So there's direct, there's levy dollars that can provide direct cash financing to capital costs. Those can be just smaller capital costs relatively speaking, hundred, two hundred thousand dollar type projects. Then later, uh, is levy support needed for, uh, general obligation debt that we might take out for our capital projects. So we borrow on a general obligation basis for capital investments. Um, and if there's no other revenues or backing to repay that debt, it's gonna find its way into the tax levy. Will it even require eleven dollars to pay for that? And then of course, those eleven dollars in the debt service are competing essentially with, um, you know, competing is probably not the right word, but you know, they're again, existing in a, a framework where we only have so many eleven dollars we can, we can place in the community. Um, you know, that will restrict our ability to use eleven dollars elsewhere, general fund, library, capital investments. So then revenue back to general obligation bound is another lever. Um, and this is what we've talked about in the past during the fiscal plan process. As you, as we've all talked about, was, um, that levy limit program in the states kind of a silly one, where you actually get kind of a credit or an exemption from the levy limit early on if you have, uh, based on your annual debt service payments for general obligation debt. And so what, what the many municipalities across the state end up doing is those program, perhaps indirectly, maybe in unintended consequence of the program or not, is that you end up with municipalities having to borrow market obligation bonds in order to essentially achieve that exemption from the state's levy in the corner and levy your collections and operations. That works when you've got the revenue back source paying that general obligation debt. So, you know, in addition to this kind of formula that we all have to play and we're far from the level the state is doing it. Another reason why you might do revenue back general obligation borrowing is you're actually gonna get a little, so it's general obligation borrowing. Does it's always been backed by the, they can kind of the city as opposed to a senior revenue source that you have at base borrowing. So there are a couple of reasons why you might do that. And again, we're evaluating fiscal plan, budgeting options, those are things we're evaluating. It was a conversation with, what makes the most strategic sense for what we borrow and how it borrows. Um, and then of course, user rates and user fees and rates are another one. So, um, we have plenty of examples of user fees and rates in the general fund. Um, you've got your recreation programming fees, you've got, uh, uh, public safety related fees. Um, and, and we're filling credits and things like that. You've got impact fees, you've got utility rates, uh, taxi fares, garbage fees, so on and so forth. But we're all others that you would potentially, um, work with your council's direction, how we're gonna kill things. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides. So now we're getting a little bit there, we're on our assumptions. So those are the levers. And for the next two years, when we prepare the budget, budget that you're gonna see is, um, we assume no new legislative changes impacting revenues in the general fund. We, as of this year, this will be approved through an impact back, uh, all that additional shared supplemental revenue from the cities on five hundred thirty thousand dollars. But they eliminated, you know, federal universal property portion taxes. So, um, that was in effect this year. Obviously, the state in fact for the next two years of budgeting, but we don't assume any legal change at this point. Um, on that kind of scale, we reverse, continue to assume based on prior council feedback that when we're, when we're constructing our general fund budget, um, you know, we're limiting the resource requirements to a maximum of net, uh, net levy increases for the set. So whenever we do the general fund, when we limit our other revenue sources, um, you know, that last one we're gonna play around with is getting what I said. That's where we're living at, what's that net impact, maybe it exceeds four percent. We're making internal decisions about, about our council brain, what can we need to do to adjust that, to get under that, that levy set on council. And we'll continue to do that assumption that that's the target. Um, minimum fund balance of forty percent, where the target is fifty, as I mentioned before. Competitive wages and benefits, as I've mentioned, continue supporting and improving development. Goes back to the tin support of the general fund I talked about earlier. Um, any fire station budget, over ten million dollars. So that's eight million dollars of construction with the balance of two billion things like design, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, uh, contingents and things of that nature. But, um, you know, that certainly will have a future impact on our, on the levy, um, capacity. We can also, uh, have a library project, totally to be determined, but as we all know, we've got some, we've got certain. So we have a, a four million dollar rate that we heard about yesterday. Um, and so a total library project now, um, that will at least keep one of the others, but will, um, we're kind of sorting that and talking about what all this and project, that's something we'll be, you know, on the library board that you will hold on in the months ahead. Um, update of electric and water. So you all have your applications to the public service commission, that's a process as well on. Uh, daily emails going back and forth with the P S, as I assumed with the A's. So we're working through that. Um, certainly going to have a book for you about those. You know, maybe for electric, close to mid of this year, the next year, water is probably gonna be solidly key one of, of twenty five. Um, so we are working through those, but they are baked into the budget for those respective utilities. Um, but then we assume no additional new utility initiatives or projects besides what's in the capital plan. Um, again, that would be the twenty four to twenty eight adopted C I P. Um, and so that would be a good budget to operate well to see. And it's of course on the website as well. Um, we, we are, um, can refer with the T five of quarter housing extension, which would affect the twenty twenty six revenue year. So based on reform on of twenty five assessments, but then it's your twenty twenty six revenue year. Um, the increment that comes into T five in that year, which is each transfer that walks some into the housing reserve fund in the future quarter housing issues. I mean, the T is essentially closed out with a zero balance. And then we also assume of course, cost recovery for fee-based services. So, um, understanding that of course, whenever you have a, a revenue back fund that, um, isn't so seen, you're going to require some sort of subsidy from where typically that's gonna fall back on the general fund. So it's a, kind of just a general, um, assumption that we operate with unless we do otherwise, that we'll try to maintain like, uh, limit the amount of growth in general fund sales that those funds may currently require. Um, so last kind of slide on assumptions and just to put the finest point possible on this as we narrow it down more is people, trees, and projects are the three kind of neat things we're gonna see in the twenty five, twenty six projects. So, um, unless we hear them otherwise, these would be the major changes that you see in there, um, kind of the major flues. And anything else, um, you know, there really shouldn't be anything else in there that would be too surprising to, or anything like that. For the most part, the rest of what's in there are gonna be inflationary requests that we received from departments and things like that for the most part. So we are in, in the twenty five, twenty six budget, adding one F T E for police patrol. That would actually be in the twenty twenty six year. Um, so if, in that case, we would have one opportunity to come back and talk with you more about that next year. Because, and remember, um, you know, we said about annual budget for our internal, we said, but we do still have to come back in an annual budget in the levy. So we could have this conversation to begin next year. But, um, for now, that's what's in the binding of budget. We do have a hundred thousand dollars over the next two years for election support. Um, plus one F T E, uh, net, so this would be a net F T E for conservation in parks within the community development department. And the reason I say net F T E is that, um, we do currently contemplate adding two for one of those, correct? So it would be a net of one to the general fund, books one to five. Um, and then if that were to be the case, you know, we would essentially book to the general fund or the levy. Um, cause the grant, when we could get two as a bonus, or some, some, so it's kind of a way of leveraging grants opportunities and kind of staggering here in the amount of loans or need for the positions. Um, and then four percent wage increases are currently budgeted. We do have twelve percent health insurance renewal budget. Last year was a zero percent renewal. This year, um, it was twelve. What we are looking at doing however, is adjusting the amount of city coverage for the health insurance plans from eighty seven and a half percent to eighty five percent. Which does mean that employees would be paying more towards their health premiums. But that does reduce the net increase to the city from twelve percent to about seven and a half percent. And Karen Berstrom will certainly be talking with her on that and, um, I asked to, who were the health insurance for the other player? Wasn't, wasn't, uh, a great year for renewal news? Um, and so that's one of the levers that we're pulling as part of this budget to try and move back to the, to the savings and expenses.
Josh, can we clarify the elections? If that's an additional hundred thousand over base budget in twenty twenty three, twenty four. Just wanted to call out that Don Race is for, or we, we require an extra seasonal to run the elections. There's just a lot more costs, not to mention here's physical cost of elections too. So, um, I think we're still getting the, kind of taking the, the counties by and large, but we still are buying, you know, voting booths and other things that we need, um, that are always brand colors. So, so I just, we wanna make sure that there's enough there. That's not how much elections cost. Elections are, we think are gonna cost an additional hundred thousand compared to what we have budgeted in twenty three, twenty four. And frankly, the elections in twenty three and twenty four have cost more than the budget because I've just continually authorized the addition that all request them unreasonable. Just to make sure elections go well, so. Again, this is, like, this is my annual opportunity to tell you that the things in the budget are not boring. But this whole budget process is pretty anticlimactic because you've set all these priorities for us, you approve all these plans. Even with the great growth that we have, we don't have a million dollars to just come up with ideas for things. By the time you just get past the people category, you can start to work into the trees and you wanna make an extra effort. You know, that's, the current budget is, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the trees. So, you know, we're heading there. Four hundred thousand dollars in two years. So, you know, if you don't wanna do that, you have some other new other initiatives, but we're, yeah, just saying. I, I don't think we can keep up, we don't like double and triple our efforts. And so over two years, you're basically purpleing efforts on trees, which of course is a lot better shape. We still probably won't keep up on replacements, but you'll keep up, you'll likely keep up on the important variables of the safety and aesthetic. Or the end of the building, I think that's pretty much it. So that's a good thing and a bad thing, but council, you know, initiatives or whatever we do, it's actually, it's like people, trees, and projects that we are in your group just takes all of that. The good news is we're not having a bunch of discussion about what we're closing, getting rid of, you know, which other cities are still facing because they don't have their, and they don't, they happen to have a longer fiscal plan to make sure they have, to get through it. Um, but it's not just people, trees, and projects. Those are kind of the bigger initiatives. We're still doing all the things that we've done up until twenty five. Staffing levels are pretty stable across all the direct service departments, I trust. So we, we did in twenty three and twenty four, it was really, we turned back on all the people, admin, finance, H U R, uh, head reductions in T E. And so now we're kind of building back up slowly with that people thing, straight at those direct service positions out there. I'd really like to see, we've talked about this stuff, I think we would like to see us do a little bit more on trees. If the capacity exists for it. And I wouldn't mind invading fund balance to one another, trees. I think the sooner we get the trees out and down and replaced, the better off it'll be. But what's the total cost? We think that would be my main question. If we had a little bit lower, what would we need for trees to get today? It's all a work.
Yeah, I'm, I'd like to get back to on that, uh, what I remember as we had. I can't remember the date, but it says probably thirteen hundred trees left. Yeah, probably less than that, or even a whole. With the, uh, ten pair, some might be getting closer to a thousand. But now you're talking about trees that personally would contract.
Yeah.
I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you really try to?
Twenty six.
So one of the things we're trying to do is get money on to twenty five, twenty six, especially if you take advantage of prices we have in twenty five contract. But you're still talking, you think it's gonna be an average of five hundred dollars a tree. That may be light, if you average out the twenty six, whatever the twenty six contract is maybe. And then the replacements are two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars a piece. So, you know, it's seven hundred fifty, two thousand dollars per tree. You're about a thousand trees left, so. But there's a lot to, is there, is there help escalating like that?
No, we'll have to contract.
I just said, I would ask whether you, to, to do it. Did one company or, or, yeah. Why, why would we concern about running an L I?
Well, that's, I mean, the thing is, we're, we're being, so. Um, that's where we organize and we have a new G I S map, I mean, we're, we're. We're not considered a top city to work for from contract basis, meaning we'll just let them go and do the work, verify it's, it's done, pay the bill. Um, so I'd like to think we'll have two, at least two companies that could do the whole thing. Which whole level for twenty six give us some competitive nature. Um, I guess I'm hearing from.
So again, don't, don't understand that five hundred thousand takes care of every dash tree. And it certainly doesn't take care of opening the wall and replace.
Twenty, I, the twenty fifty thousand person, I, you want, well, that's in a level, now we're like, oh.
Yeah, it's about fifty, fifty thousand this year. We have, also. We plan to do that. Fifteen, you're planning, total adjustment target, it's like a ten year plan. So we can, we can, we can, we can help the money. That's included. The, uh, treatments too, are the trees that were treated, so. But.
You could take the, the, the question is, the valid one is how much does, what's the number? Let's write the value off, but I think the question has to come with, what's the actual capacity exactly? Yeah, or, or, or better to get the trees down.
Okay, so, um. I'm still trying to be optimistic that there's gonna be some, we initially did forestry or something, you know, we get to the disaster or something, still want to do the ninety ways that, to whoever, so. So I would recommend we just take the total number of trees we're gonna grow, and just pause the journey, which is, which is beautiful. Even if we could find the people to do it.
Yep.
This, this based on the plan, which is, which is an older plan, but it's been revised by officials. This will make a big dent in the very, very dead trees. It, it may not do us, I don't want you to think that we're gonna be super proactive or it's gonna get ahead. Um, but this would likely get us to the sum of the, so we're already getting into. It's gonna be dramatic, uh, expensive. And we already have trees, but we already have a lot of the twenty five trees identified. So like if you drive up Bayou here and you see the ones on Bayou Street, and those, those are things we take those down. All winter, we're on the twenty five schedule for those, so when you guys see there. They are not dead yet, but they are pretty close. So we're kind of, we're about a year, just say we're gonna be a year behind. And if you had an idea, if we would have had more money this year, probably we would have got, you know, two hundred trees down. It's a big deal, um, and we're not even taking out, these are a horse all over trees.
Yeah.
Uh, the private tree is, is gonna be a challenge for the community members. It's, it's gonna be more expensive for them. You know, they're getting the tree companies, they're more listening, pricing to privates. So we're not by the twenty six contract, they're not quite close. And if people do the same price, um, because they're, you're talking about crane and some, some people's, or just chainsaw and take it down. And hope it lands in the right spot. It's gonna be frank into the back and take it all in a little piece for piece, so.
Well, and after the trees are done, then we're gonna have to have the conversation about sidewalks. Once the trees are gone, then there's, especially you think about lost lane. There's most sidewalks almost on either side.
Yeah, we'll be, we're gonna try and be thoughtful about who we're planting in those areas. Do you have some?
Be a good idea.
So I think Mr. Con is planting most of those trees even the line of sidewalk.
Yeah, actually, yes, so.
Once they're done, it's almost all.
I wouldn't make sense for a, yeah.
And fifty thousand, when you do a lot for trees, but I will also tell you, we've already considered fund balance of it. Because we've got these big, uh, fire station in particular, we're trying to use fund balance to. Because we've got these big fire station in particular, we're trying to use form balance to. To lower our dead service, so we're not at the forty percent, but. Forty two, forty three, I think is reasonable. So you can take it right down accordingly, it's policy to the city council. It's really my recommendation, this is my. But I could be back and fix them again. And look at the G I S map. Do you want?
I, I'd love to see some modeling at three hundred per year. And two fifty if we could. Just so we can make some conscious decision about whether we wanna, knowing we got these other projects. Three, three hundred thousand versus two hundred.
Yes. Trees, no. Um. Knowing that we would make a conscious decision to further invade fun balance, which. Has not always been my favorite position, but if. It's time to plant trees yesterday. Sorry, Josh. Just you joking, that's.
Yep.
And it's matched with strategic plan of grant funding, when possible, but. I think we're doing a lot of that too.
Yeah, we are getting grant funding, but it's like twenty thousand, so it's not, you know, it's.
We've got federal infrastructure dollars under the beacon behind it, there's some cities that. Create a, and, and, we. Plants with trees, and so then they use. But we don't really have a lot of census tracts that qualify for, for that, so I think we really need competitive, okay? I've, I've been impressed with the creativity of some cities to get money to pay the ash trees. Using, um, the, uh. I think of the justice equity. Dollars, which are, you know, to. Traditionally understood, um, neighborhoods, so. It creates some kind of purpose, or reinforced pay. Or, which is to be, pretty interesting. And we're building. Some really incredibly awesome buildings, uh, for people modeling. Two important buildings. And then the Kenny Quarter, we had some hope and running hopefully by twenty six, so there's some off from, I can hit twenty five.
Yep.
Um. And I would also, this is my, so this is my second. Oh, um, um, we really have. No staff capacity to add to the bucket. Um, the library's very happy. Although, how are we gonna get that to move, when it. Because we've got a library and a fire station. Will be coming off. Some pretty significant, you know, electric base fire infrastructure, plus Wasp and. Plus Man Valley. So they're really not getting much time, it sounds like they don't have much time to get this to wrap. They'll be buried inside, we're on these two projects, so that's, that's helpful. I do want to caution the council that. There isn't much I can squeeze out. If, if I'm projecting forward, especially with the US of America. You know, if we hit on that, even though it's an army project, it's gonna require a lot of that. So that may delay downtown planning, may delay. We might have to look at some of our other stuff and say, well, we've got these great opportunities. Because right now, my general feeling is we've got too much in the bucket. Oh. We're optimistic, but.
Well, the Army Corps, Duff Dale, whip it into the kitty board.
Right, and, and we, I think, I'm not optimistic, I think if we set up some parallel, teams of micro. Fire station. We can gotta move those through at the same pace and try to minimize the stress. Maybe first half of August, fire stations, second half of this time. We got different parties involved, so lots of coordinating that, but. Uh, we also might, it. The, the library grant requires us to start by July versus twenty five with construction. And we've got to finish by September, we'll do thirty at about twenty six. So, like, there's no time to live. So, um, the fire station just happened, we're getting a timeline, a year to. We're building, so actually, the fire stations, you have to bid, we have to bid the library. Before May, if we expect to start in July. Um, and when we compete with. It just ended like six coming years, several. Projects that were honored, so they all have to spend money at the same time. Uh, I think we're gonna be fortunate hopefully because, you know, Hans coming off Main Valley. It's so, site attack. Reminding us. Apishah. So Apishah, I think. Which they do a lot of wasteland stuff, they're, you know, they're maybe some interest in their. Plus the library, people that are working on libraries, stations, it's good for their workers, so. You know, we can't just pick the same company, we each, or we're not to go through. Process, but we need to be nice if we have the same company for both. Both projects, so. See, that's, I mean, it's exciting stuff that. We have to go fast on, that's, that's, that, so, you know, there'll be scorecard grant, you have to. Ready to go, like, we're not gonna take eighteen months to talk about it. We're gonna basically lose the planning very long to go forward. I think the feedback I'm hearing is. Do some more digging on the old Ashville, but otherwise, we, I think there'll be some grants, funds for what else you see here. Is there any hard part about asking employees to pay a little bit more health insurance?
Well, you know, uh, it's, uh, comparable.
I'd say a lot, we're just slightly, we're not averages that we saw, so we have employee health insurance committed here. But, he wrote that, I mean, too, Josh. Next year, um. Our contribution is probably average or like a little bit nicer than average, we're starting slightly. Fifteen percent wage share is more cutting than twelve and a half. It's more than a half, it's kind of. But, act. It's called Act Ten in twenty eleven.
I did, yeah.
So. It stayed there for a long time, and we've had really good results with our premier cases for a long time, so we haven't passed that one. This was like this year where. It was a pretty substantial, obviously the employment committee would rather. Get anything, they said, and they'd rather keep the plan and pay a little bit. And this is not one of the same polls, and survey of all, it's, it's like. Advisory, always, but. I would guess that that would be the problem. I'll solve it always. You, you couldn't say. We're just gonna eat that for, for this year again, um. Or we could, and we talked about doing a one percent each year. Uh, we thought, since we're a little bit probably behind the average on our contribution, we'll just throw that. But it's a really good plan, I think. Well, the member of the age group is a big, right, and then. That allows me to increase to get a four percent wage increase because it helps cover. You know, it should cover the C P I plus, uh, most of it, for all employees, it should cover. C P I plus their increase in bringing in share. So they shouldn't lose any ground.
No, that thirty percent.
Hot, but, well, it, it does add to about three and a quarter, three and a half percent. When you, you, with the wage increase, so that's fast, and it doesn't show you.
Yeah.
But we do want to make sure we're asking you. And not be, be either bad or bad if you say, no, that's okay, but we did, but there are some councils. I've worked with in the past, when, you know, we're just, that's part of our costs, take them. I mean, somewhere else, that isn't what our plan is, obviously, we're recommending this.
And we do have the twelve percent budgeted, even if, you know, the actual experience with a change like this takes to close reduce, you know, seven and a half. Um, because historically, we've budgeted six percent increase, now again, last year, that will get out because it was a zero percent review. This year, obviously, when we went into this budget with the six percent, we had to change that. Um, the thought being that even though the actual experience might be seven and a half. We leave the twelve, because we're not doing too many, because we're just doing anywhere like this. And we could, kind of looking for candidates, not be back there, but, you know, you could. See, we see another quarter increase at any good time next year, so if you leave the twelve. Giving yourself some room to accommodate something next year too. On the off chance that that, that does happen. And if we go to fifteen percent this year, we're not like they recommend. Next year.
So proposed levy versus adopted fiscal plan levy, so, um, net levy growth of four percent. Top chart there shows the gross levy increase, not taking into account that net levy number, so. In twenty five and twenty six, the adopted fiscal plan went five percent each year. The proposed budget includes six percent for twenty five, five percent for twenty six, now the reason you see that six percent though. Um, is because we had larger net new construction than was concated in the fiscal plan, so fiscal plan we baked in about seven and a half. Ended up being, uh, carries three point four, three point one four. Um, so, you know, when you see larger net new construction, that's gonna, that's essentially going to bring down that net result, so that, and that's really what we're looking at under councils. Directions that net levy growth, um, not so much gross, that is something we pay attention to, um. But, you know, again, net new construction, what that does is essentially influences the net levy number that we're ultimately looking at, so. Whether we larger net new construction than anticipated, that keeps us at a net levy increase perspective, two to four percent on the overall fiscal plan. So, four percent, four percent for both, both years, um, right on target. So, um, jumping into the capital improvement plan then, um. As I mentioned, this is really just a continuation of projects that were already approved as part of twenty four, twenty five. So, you know, changes that we moved somewhere are related to things like the fire station project. Um, they're related to the library project. And then, um, Kenny Corrigan implementation for the Army Corps lending years portion in twenty five. A, uh, range dependent tender replacement for the fire department. And then, um, electric bucket truck are items that we've already seen in C I P, but currently, those have changed. Um, fire station and library have. Then when you move into twenty six, um, Man Valley infrastructure, now this one's development dependent, this specifically impacts the electric utility, but would be dependent on the, the nature of development that occurs there. Again, in the existing C I P, that's not, not a big amount, anything like that. Um, future phases of Kenny Corrigan implementation, this will be getting us beyond. Um, jamming with restoration and into work, uh, future overworking amenity, uh, based projects for the Kenny Corrigan implementation. Uh, partial funding for Little District Extension, that specific project, uh, this will be the approved portion of a multi-year funding for that project, so that actually extends into twenty seven. Um, but for the purposes of this budget, you haven't seen that, that first year of the funding. And then, um, electric underground extension, um, of the Highway Thirty Five, so. Um, that's what's in the twenty five, twenty six capital improvement plan, that, you know, are kind of the large ticket items, if you will, um. So then transitioning in the non-levy highlights, for the electric utility. Um, it includes implementation of the new rate structure, which is a six percent aggregate increase, as we talked about. Um, so again, not every customer category is in C six percent, that's your aggregate increase. What that means, uh, for the fund is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars in additional revenue. To achieve the Public Service Commission's benchmark rate of return. For the water utility, that's a fifty one percent aggregate increase, that gets the utility nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in additional revenue to achieve. Four and a half percent rate of returns, and we call them a, a rate of return at the P S C's benchmark. Um, they haven't asked about that, as I mentioned, it's, it's a rate work from the P S C, so they will ultimately tell us, or it's not given. That, to some degree, it needs to be a negotiated process between the city and the P S C. Um, but at no point in time is the P S C apt to give any of our feedback or negotiation, if you can help them, um. I don't have any indication right now what the P S C's thoughts are about for math versus benchmarks, it's simply asked some questions, we've responded with. I mean, we certainly have our own internal fiscal parameters, we use the same monitor. Uh, and four and a half percent rate of return is sufficient to get us what we, you know, think's P S C, but we're, we're good. So, um, we'll, you know, stay, stay tuned on that, so I'm going to use the work for the process and answer a lot of their questions, um. Solid waste fund, we, uh, received feedback from waste management, removed the ruins for the last year of that contract, and. Um, currently, we pay eighteen dollars and ninety first cents per account, that will increase to nineteen dollars and eighty five cents. Um, so in this budget and fee schedules, we're proposing, uh, increasing the garbage fee from twenty, twenty one. That not only covers all the costs that we're charged by the management, but that covers some of the, the overhead costs that get charged to the solid waste fund. Um, for administering garbage. So enterprise funds, just some highlights then, so, uh, again, for the electric utility, new rail structure implementation, develop, develop independent projects in Ginn Valley. Um, for waste water, as I mentioned, staff are finalizing a cost of service study, which is, uh, the same study that we did for electric and water, so we plan to. Come back to you with some recommendations for future sewer rates, um, based on that cost of service study, we're, we're working with trilogy. Of the not, not to the same degree that we did with them for water, because then water's P S C, you know, we're, so we really need. To tap into their expertise, as far as navigating the P S C process goes, but if, if waste water, um, it, it's not so, you know. Um, that's gonna be, we'll, we'll be controlled by the setting. Um, and, obviously, bio cells becomes operational in twenty twenty five, so in the budget, um. You have, uh, an operating decrease of, I was saying, it's, I need specifics to you on that, but three to four hundred thousand dollars I would need, but of course, we're making up for that with some of the best weeks that we're taking on, um, we're going to the project. But going back to a trilogy, can we talk to you about all of that? We'll, we'll see the, I guess, the cost savings, if you will, from, even on state run, that service for object compared to the cost we're going through. To stay in the consortium, um, we'll see that kind of cost savings ramp up over time, even though we're showing that service that we've taken on. And then, we're going to look at our impact fees in twenty twenty five as well, and those we asked maybe at in twenty thirteen, um, so. The eight later is, is kind of, they do that again. Water, rate structure implementation, and these studies as well, in twenty twenty five. For store water, we plan to examine rates there as well, but that's not, that's kind of further than water, that's, I mean, you get through electric, get through water, sewer. Store water is, is in okay shape, and from a macro perspective. That would be more of, of the analysis of whether we should want to utilize the store water until it's a bonus for us for. Perhaps increased service levels, projects would, uh, probably to accommodate, because the fund is, is relatively small, as far as store water and sewer is going. Certainly compared to the other three. And rates there have not changed since two thousand and eight. Uh, for the EMS fund, we have an agreement with N B O that we're working through next year. Uh, the term on expires December thirty, thirty twenty twenty five, so from, from start, I'm going to go into that this next year as well. So then I do just want to talk a little bit more about, um, the electric and, and water, so it's, um, given, given the rates and the, the rate studies and things, so. What we see here are two charts, twenty twenty three actual, twenty twenty four estimated, and then that's budgeted, um, for twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, so those are, those measures will be as of December thirty first of twenty twenty six. Um, and really the story here is that you're kind of seeing the same trend happening in all of the measures, days of cash measure, um. You see the same thing happening across the world for both utilities, which is some deteriorating positions for the current measures, um. Each of those measures are independent, I put them all together, they certainly are correlated, so where you see a decline in one, that we see a decline in other, but they are all separate, independent measures, um. And so, you know, really, it's a, it's a pretty compelling case of, of, uh, decline in days of cash on hand. Um, and so, you know, really, it's a, it's a pretty compelling case of, of, uh, declining days of cash on hand. Declining debt coverage, uh, certainly for the water utility, and then, you know, declining rate of return, which again, benchmarking is six and a half percent as of the time of the C I P. So, um, for electric utility, twenty twenty four estimated rate of return is one point one, it's one point four percent. Around, and, you know, whereas with water, it's actually below zero, I'm thinking of two point one percent. So, with a six and a half percent benchmark rate of return, we, you know, we've got some ways to go, and that's why with water utility, we see that fifty one percent aggregate that we talked about. Um, you know, debt coverage for for, uh, the water utility, we have bond covenants that require one and a quarter coverage.
Or not twenty.
Exactly, or not four, so we're we're back there. Um, so that's, that's a big part of the story there as well. Um, and then for the electric utility, that is more of a days of cash on hand, we have a a council policy that requires them to raise. Uh, so you can see a little bit of that for the electric utility, so, um, you know, that provides some context behind the delay cases. And the decision that comes to you all earlier this year and ask for more, we'll see. And then, uh, assuming the numbers we received back from trilogy, uh, for water and W P P, I have for electric, you can see what the results then would be as of December thirty first to twenty twenty six. We'd be back above the nine days of cash on hand for electric. Um, rate of return would be at the benchmark, water utility, days of cash really isn't the issue with that particular fund, it's it's the the debt coverage because of more of the object, because of the. More water to the object, but you can see that debt coverage gets back up to, uh, over two and a half percent. So, and the council policy, again, there, with debt coverage, bond covenants required, one and a quarter, you would adopt the policy that requires one and a half. So, um, that gets us well done, well, we policy. So that's the context of what we're seeing with the rates and the way the study from where we anticipate happening, once we're on the the far side of of all of this. Um, so then proposed tax levy, uh, in the fiscal plan, it was eight point one eight million. The twenty five, um, budgets, this is, this is twenty five specifically. Um, was eight point one eight million, and what's being proposed is eight point two seven. Uh, and you can see what the breakdown is in terms of percent and how that compares to the fiscal plan. So really, uh, as far as the breakdown goes, uh, it's the it's the capital. So we've got more money going into general fund operations in the proposed budget compared to what was in the fiscal plan. Um, and that was because some low district design and some inspection software was originally contemplated as being in twenty five. Um, and just through the budgeting process and, um, kind of consolidating projects and and cash flows, and then we're actually going to proceed with some of these things. And with inspection software, some other operational, um, decisions. We essentially, you know, the the books of health, those are, uh, going into the general fund instead, so, um.
So the low district design is going to be dependent on what we took with the. The year we said.
No. So we're just gonna run the road right through. Uh, the road is quite a hit south of.
Oh.
The same. In the world is where the road is, not. South. Ends up. Ends up to the hill, to the south.
Okay. I just thought to come down the hill and just go straight, but.
Um, no, to go up the the slope. You don't have to find design, whatever the design follows the total, so that you don't cut it eighteen. Degrees or about eight degrees of sideways. Or just entrance or something like that.
Okay.
So, of course, it's. Where celebration change. Kind of like going into your. Head office.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then we're at the slide with the talk, estimated average tax bill. Um, with the the caveats listed, whether the individual tax bills, you know, differ based on value county of residence, since we do have. Uh, Pierce County, St. Paul County residents, um, other taxing jurisdictions, the tip version, et cetera. So really what we're looking at here is the city only portion excluded kids. For Pierce County resident, assuming home value of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I arrived at that number by looking at our last municipal assessment report, um, we looked at the total. Uh, improvement value for residential properties divided by that number, parcels and divided at a at a average value. Now, you know, keeping in mind that our assessment ratio is is low. Um, so, in in future year, when we do a full revaluation, you can see that happens when we come off. Um, but we're not, we're not there yet, so that's your average. Um, so net new construction in River Falls is three point five eight percent. Um, so overall, tax levy increase was just a little bit over six percent. Um, net new construction covers pays, um, approximately a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars of that increase. So the net or non-growth portion is two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars or three point eight one percent. I wanted to throw a B slide, but it's it's technical a little bit, little enough for that. Um, and so if you're looking at all those caveats I mentioned before, Pierce County residents, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what your assessment will be based on, on average. Current tax for one thousand four ninety three, versus the same version. Now it increased to one thousand by one hundred and thirteen in twenty twenty five. Um, just to give you a snapshot of of what that looks like. So we're at the next step slide, this was kind of it for prepared remarks, um, so our next steps staff would be to, again, we want to confirm assumptions with you all. Any stop signs that you want to put out now, um, for all years for those. Otherwise, we plan to distribute draft budget books to you all next week. And that would include the transmitter letter from Scott, I answered you all, I'm summarizing everything you see in the book. And then budget workshop and first reading of the budget documents will be October twenty second. And that's it, so glad to get questions, discussion, confirmation, assumption, stop signs, et cetera.
A little bit true is on hand. Looks a little right to me. It's a little bit tough, yes. Well, we can accomplish it with millions, because it's one hit with this budget. Do you know how much the, um, school district. Or heck, the league's gonna go up, cause we didn't get one for it. Not, not been involved. It more than they should have been. Beginning with.
Very good.
We get one.
You, you, when I just kept, it real time. Always look at work together. We did, we could turn it about, and I think it's. There is a game, there's a time. I mean, this, you don't have a person.
It's difficult for them.
But less than seven days of. Found out. And that was ahead of a timeline that. So they could, so it's gonna. So.
Thank you.
So it it was a surprise, a happy surprise. And then, but there's also lots of projects out there with the same money. So I go there to, I'm sure it's, it's. Just to, so that is kind of making a challenge, and that's what we're gonna do, hurry up and get good plans, results. There'd be a lot of competition for contractors to get. It was.
Josh, that was all for.
Yeah, that's a compliment. All right, you want to turn with her?
Yeah. So that's. Thank you.